We should be live.
Alright, okay guys, it's six o'clock, a change, so let's get started. Say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we got all hands on deck tonight, so the forum is taken care of. And on our regular agenda tonight, we are removing number fifteen, sixteen E, and seventeen. That's what I have on my list. Anybody's got anything else or changes?
You said it was from there?
Yep, it's uh, number fifteen, sixteen E, and seventeen. Have been removed from the agenda for this evening. Lucas, what do you got?
Uh, can you please add a nine F? Resolution directing Colliers and OT to sell bonds.
Try it again, resolution two?
Resolution directing Colliers, uh, that's DOR now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, uh, and onset Twitchell to sell bonds. So basically, Colliers being your bonding agency and OT being your bond council.
Okay. Alright, anybody got anything else change wise?
And then, do you wanna add Eno? Eno's discussion?
Yep, where did you wanna put that?
Wherever you'd like.
Let's put it at, uh, let's put between eight and nine. Alright. Any more ink on the agenda or?
Motion approved.
I'm gonna make some motion. Chelsea has a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, agenda's approved. Okay, and the consent agenda. Anybody got any questions? I think it's pretty cut and dry on this one.
Any of the documents changed from last night written?
Not that known.
You should have had, well, you should have, um, D and E were probably uploaded up just recently.
Oh, so the one-
You have them up there.
The one question I had was the, um, the shared use path, is that the final payment?
We have just five thousand dollars retainers remaining.
So the retainers, the only piece that's left?
Yep, we'll be through the semi-final, which is tonight, the balancing change order tonight, and then we'll have the final, the final payment.
And then if we have a cost for removal, if we have that taken care of, so.
I know, that's why, that's why I was kinda asking, is if, what's the plan for removal, so?
Uh, we're, we're reviewing proposed agreement, because one of the property owners was asking for some different things.
Okay, so it's still stuck in the same position, hasn't changed?
Hasn't changed yet.
Okay.
Okay, otherwise, anybody else that was gonna accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is?
I'm sorry, I forgot. So the dollar amount for color seventeen shared use path should be thirty-one thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and two cents. They signed the wrong one. Thirty-one thousand, six hundred and nineteen. I had a math mistake. So right there where it says thirty-six, that should be thirty-one. Oh, they signed the wrong one, sent it back to me.
Say the number again, Jim.
Three, one, six, one, nine, point, zero, two.
Got it.
Just trust that before I take it over.
Okay. Alright. Any else have any other questions, otherwise, accept a motion with the, uh, change.
Still moved.
Okay, give me the motion. It's a second?
A second.
Brandon does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Minutes from last time around. If you guys have a chance to look, if you see anything, it looked good to me, but.
Looked accurate. Motion approved.
Alright, I made a motion. It's a second?
A second pass.
Dave does a second, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, we're at public comment, anybody got anything they wanna talk about tonight? Go ahead.
Hey guys, my name's Brandon Reber.
Yeah, use the microphone up here, please.
Tall people. Um, my name's Brandon Reber, I, uh, just moved over to the west side of town a couple months ago. Just got a couple questions, um, that I'm sure have been asked before, but I figured if I don't ask, I don't know. Um, so we're looking to plant our boulevard trees. And, um, for the, for the, the public right-of-way permit, it's like a two hundred dollar fee. I understand the public right-of-way permit to, uh, you know, to dig in public right-of-way. And I kinda talked to Keith a little bit before this, so that it, it might be a moot point at this, at this juncture, but, um, just wondering if that's something that could possibly be examined, um, for the planting of, of trees in public right-of-way. So I'm not digging up the street or ruining anything, but.
So, on the right-of-way, we are on agenda twenty, we're gonna be talking about right-of-way permits in regards to if you have to have a right-of-way permit or not. So, that would be a discussion on twenty, we'll be talking about that, based on, I know your conversation with Keith and feedback on that, and we're looking at that a little bit more, because we're trying to encourage boulevard trees as actually required by ordinance, so we're gonna be talking about that here on agenda twenty.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem getting a, it just seems a little steep to plant a tree.
Yeah, so we're gonna talk about that one there.
Awesome. And then the second one, um, also with planting trees, um, establishing a lawn, which, which takes a lot of water. And I don't know, there's no sewer max currently in the city. Um, I know, you know, I'm paying for all the water, I'm using upfront, I'm not flushing all that water down my drainage on the back end. So I don't know if you guys have had any, had any discussion on a possible max sewer?
We'd love to be able to do that, the problem is, is that the good percentage of residents flush their sump line down the sewer, and we have no idea how much is actually being processed by our lagoon versus what is actually being used, so it, it, I hear you, you're not the first person to bring it up, the problem is, right now, we don't, we can't, we don't have a mechanism to be able to monitor the outflow coming through the sewer, to be able to say, alright, there is either a maximum or something. If, if we basically put an ordinance in place saying no more sump lines going into the sanitary sewer, then we could put a max in place, but as it is right now, it's causing so many issues with our lift stations and everything with some people, all that just happened with this last rain event.
Friday, yeah.
So, that's the fundamental problem. We'd love to be able to cap it, but right now, the way it is, it's causing too much of a pain.
No, that makes sense, that makes sense, I just, yeah.
So, I hear ya, I, you're not the first person to raise that topic, so.
And again, in the grand scheme of the world, there are far bigger problems, but, um, just figured I'd ask, so.
That's the rationale of why it is the way it is.
Okay, and that makes sense, so.
So, thank you.
Okay, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Welcome to town, by the way.
Uh, anybody else wanna say anything or move along? Going once, going twice? Alright, sheriff's report, I don't think they're here, so.
I don't see any update document. He must not have submitted anything.
Yeah, we didn't.
They typically don't get it this time, do we? You get the first?
If we're able to get it to the first meeting, then we give it to you. If it's not the first meeting, because sometimes we have an issue of timing, because they don't have all the data available, then we give it to you the second meeting. So it's whenever it's available, we do give it to you, and then if you do have any concerns, uh, I could kick that back to the deputies if they're not able to make it. I know we are looking at a different night for Night to Unite, uh, having it sometime early October. I know that was one thing that they would be bringing up, so, uh, we'll keep everybody posted once we get a night solidified for that.
Yeah, work around the church schedule.
Yep.
So. Okay, we'll just, we'll pause that, maybe they'll come in later, if not, we'll just, we'll pick it up next time around. Alright, Barrett, you got the next one, number eight.
Okay, so for, uh, number eight, at the direction of the city council, we extended the da- uh, deadline for this property at four oh two Main Street to August fifteenth, which was a Saturday, uh, to abate a nuisance of, uh, items that we classify in the ordinance as junk and building materials. Uh, staff visited the site today and took pictures and included those in the report. Uh, it, from my observations, it looks like there's some substantial improvements to the property, but under the, uh, language of the ordinance, the nuisance hasn't been completely abated. Uh, so we just wanted to bring this, uh, in front of the city council tonight to verify how far you'd like staff to go, if you'd like us to enter the property and abate the nuisance or not. Um, also in addition, I received, uh, comments from the property owner. Uh, she said she's a full-time caretaker who couldn't be at the meeting tonight. And then also, uh, Mr. Nelson is in the audience today, he's the one who's been cleaning up the site, and, uh, he can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so, have you, when you guys had conversations, I take it, okay. So where, did he say where he was at with it, or, I mean, is this gonna get done, or?
From my understanding, it sounds like he could accommodate by taking the items on the porch and putting those inside. Uh, however, he said that the orange item that you see in the photo is some sort of, uh, fan, uh, machinery, and, uh, that would have to be carried out of sight. He states that that is, isn't his property, and, uh, he would, uh, has no means of removal of those items.
Okay. Does he want the city to move him? Let me ask, kinda what it's coming down to is, if we're gonna abate this thing, that was the point, was get it cleaned up, so. You're the, yeah, please?
Please.
Yeah, I got pictures here if you want me to, I, I cleaned everything off the deck, so that is a lot.
Okay.
Them fans and stuff, these are landlords, I don't know, they've been there for ten years, I guess, but, so, I, I don't really know. But as far as all that stuff on the deck, I got that off.
So the fans, the fans right in this area, you mean?
Yeah, there's some fans under that tree there.
Yeah.
They're kinda growing in the trees.
Okay, I know they've been there a while.
So, I mean, I cleaned up, there was a wheelbarrow there and a couple things that I cleaned up here, I got pictures here, I'm gonna email them for my, 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 my. All that stuff on the deck, I put that up there, there's decking I got up there, I put up there, put a new deck on there. I'm just, this guy owes me some money, I'm just putting my stuff in there, I'm just trying to get some payment out of that, that's very simple. So, I just got stuff, I just don't have to run out to Christie. I, I thought it'd be okay out there, I got a fence up there, I took all the doors and put them inside, and took all, the only thing I slid up there is that decking material that I was gonna put on the deck there, so there's nothing up there anymore, I have pictures of those.
Okay, so the fan, the fan and the other stuff there belongs to someone else?
That's the landlord, yeah.
Okay. Has he been informed of that?
Uh, she's been informed, she's received multiple letters and emails, and there's already an issue.
Okay.
I mean, I can get them out of there for him, if you want, if they mail, I'll get them out of there. I gotta get a front and lower, they're big fans.
I've seen them, I know them.
So I mean, if you guys want me to get them out of there, I'll sure do.
If they've been sitting there that long, they're probably no value, so they're probably landfill or recycle.
Yeah, scrap iron.
Scrap at this point, so.
Probably, yeah, I, I mean, I, again, that's my property, but I, if it would help for everybody's sake, I'll get them out of there.
I mean, that, that's what we would do if we were to authorize the abatement anyway, right?
Right.
So if you're gonna take it, take it and get rid of it and scrap it, I would say go for it.
Okay, alright, I just need a couple days, I mean, or as weak as possible, I'm, I live in California, I'm unknown.
What I'd probably do is get a hold of the landlord.
Disinform him.
Yeah, and just let her know that, that it's gonna be moved.
So we'll give them another week deadline?
If you give me a week, I'll get them out of there, if you don't, I mean, it's not exactly a lot of fire, so.
So then why don't we just get, let her know that, because we're gonna get, by the end of the week.
Okay.
Do you want the new pictures, I can email them to you, Barrett?
I can drive by there on the way home and double check, so, we're good.
Yeah, okay, alright, I, I still got the decking material for that, I'm gonna put a different deck on. I'm just, this is just a part of the thing, so.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Alright, so let's do that, then you follow up with her, and we'll get that squared away.
Is this a formal contrary, uh, action to vote to give staff permission to move the premises?
I motion that we give staff the permission to assist in getting rid of those fans or the renter.
Alright, Dave made a motion, John does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Whichever's easier.
Yep, I know, motion carries, so.
I see easy button.
Alright, so who wants to introduce, uh, Al? Being we just put it on the agenda. Being we just put it on the agenda.
I'd say.
Barrett, you guys, just go ahead and.
Um, I guess I apologize, do, would you like to state your concern, what you're trying to resolve, and maybe your staff can address?
I don't know if you guys have seen the plan, I guess.
I have, but I don't think.
Is it just about?
So maybe if you wanna just have that all up and just kinda do a quick overview with the mic.
Sherry, I didn't mean to diss you if you were gonna be the one doing the mic, I just. You might want to start at the beginning and the finale, just kinda give us, you can do it briefly, but just kinda give a synopsis of why we're here.
For both billionaires, it's, uh, I guess, that's the usual, I guess, you know, but, uh, anyway, I guess the main objective is, you know, is, um, adjacent to kind of common seventeen, got existing that we have on the south side and the dentists on the north side, and for look at that parking lot, the way it is drawn now, you know, bumps out the, the, the ordinance is a ten feet. We had an issue with that, you know, um, because what it does is, 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 it's an obstruction, you know?
Okay.
It was drawn by the city engineers originally, you know, the straight through, and we actually pulled back on the two thousand five initially, where we had not only this potential future home, but one on the south side, okay, straight through. Okay, so that was a long-term plan we've had for years, okay, so we kinda stuck to that. Uh, engineer knew it as the same too. And for what, uh, we're counting is that the ordinance is coming in, you know, I guess, um, that, uh, we're getting bumped out and buffers are coming in, and and what's the result in is, is us changing the lots, us changing the building, uh, the building swung three times, okay? Finding, you know, I guess, uh, I just started that ordinance, we didn't have to change the block, they just went forced, but then the previous ones were built, and we had no idea that, you know, we built it for me, what we, you know, what permits were saying. So we see this as, you know, as the, the buffer, I understand, the ordinance, but we also see as the existing grandfather, you know, from one end to the other end, it should be a nice, easy, nice, easy, straightforward, nice traffic flow, with no obstruction. The, uh, buffer on the, uh, north side, we have a whole ten, uh, I think it's like two or three feet of existing over there. Perhaps maybe a five-foot buffer, that gives a little weight, but we had a shrink on that side too as well, the more we shrink the parking lot, and then we get a parking issue, then we also like the building to shrink, like I said, we shrunk this four times. Last year, with the deal we had going on with, uh, previous, uh, developer, that this building actually was bigger. Initially, it was much bigger, we didn't have an issue, you know? Now we're counting issues, you know, just the buildings. And, um, being said that, we're also a couple of financial issues that we're paying for services here multi-times, you know, structural to architectural to, you know, APAC, and it just keeps going on and on. So, we see it the simplest, the very simplest solution, I mean, what we see is actually, is just a nice, simple drive-through in the front, nice, easy traffic flow with liability, you know, with lift, you know, kit liability down, nice flow of traffic. And if we're able to acquire, you know, maybe a five-foot offset, you know, on the north side, and perhaps on the east side, but there, there's some give and take there, no doubt, because we have a hydrant, existing hydrant sitting there, that has to be, you know, in that area and protected. So maybe there's a few feet there we could probably actually grab, because we only have eleven foot for backing up, you know, so a couple extra feet would help, you know, for backing up enough kit, so, you know, so. We're just basically looking just to make this what, you know, I call it, I call it common sense, you know? Just a simple drive-through, you know, and this is nothing that, uh, we haven't, uh, changed, we've had this in our, in our perspective for, since two thousand five. Yeah, a nice, simple drive-through all the way across, you know? We just like to see a nice, easy, full of traffic, and keep it as simple as possible.
And safe.
Yeah, safe, so, I mean, so. That's basically, we don't, what I'm, what I'm looking to do is if we're able to get the quieter back.
So I was over there and talked to Al about this on Thursday night, and we were talking about this too. So, you know, you know, you guys all know where this is at. It was more like in the front, they have the continuity, like right now, you see on there, kinda jogs back a little bit with the road. I can see where he's coming from on that. If we're gonna have a presentation for, you know, what the town's looking like, we don't need to have, I don't know. I'd like to see the continuity up there too, I don't know.
Like I said, I'm not sure what you're saying, you're saying the building is sitting back versus?
Yeah, this is, this has gotten, everything's gotten pushed back a little bit, I remember Barrett, how much?
The buildings are all gonna be in line, it's just that because of the ten-foot off.
The parking.
In that front now, that pushes.
That, this building back.
Well, no, the buildings are lined up.
Coming through, I mean, it's a drive-through here. This, she's over here, see, this is back here, the line's straight up, it's pushed back here, so it makes something here, it's this way. This guy here might be in a structure.
And we're talking about still removal and things like that as well, just having it straight, unless it looks consistent that way. I mean, being, the others are already there, now we can argue about whether they were done right or not, whatever, but it is what it is at this juncture, yeah, Barrett?
Well, I, I have some comments on this, so, you know, the city just spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to adopt a comprehensive plan, and basically, that plan, it says that the city is supposed to go through, uh, planning and development application and processes to enforce what we have, so that we get that vision with our city. Um, this issue came up during the building permit process, so staff has streamlined the process where we have checklist down, we have, uh, we delegate tasks among certain departments, and we have processes set up where we bring an application through, uh, up to its completion. During this process, we identified that one of our ordinances states that if you have a parking lot that fronts right-of-way, and there's nothing obstructing that view uh, between the right-of-way and the parking lot, that you're obligated to provide this buffer space, so you can put landscaping in and break up the view. Now, in the requirements, it states that ten feet is required. Uh, I stated upfront, in my personal opinion, I think it's, uh, excessive. I'm open to a text amendment proposal to reduce that width, and one nightmare scenario that I can imagine is if you have two lots that are buddy each other, they both have that ten-foot width, well now you end up with this twenty-foot width, which, in my opinion, is a waste of land. So, uh, I'm thinking, in order to resolve this issue, you know, we have to think about this globally, on how we want to make this advan- uh, advantageous to everybody. I think it'd be in the best interest of the city to bring forward a text amendment proposal, where we would reduce this buffer width for maybe like ten to five feet, so it's more reasonable, and it's not eating up as much land, and then you can get that continuity. Now, Mr. Eno's application was pretty unique. What he was doing is, he was taking multiple lots, and he was trying to do unified development, that's the ordinance that we just passed, where, uh, property owner owns multiple properties, and they have the same zoning designation, we look at it as one lot instead of three. And, but what made it more complicated is he already had a non-conforming, uh, development on one of those lots, and we had to put it together with a new development. So basically, what we said is, whatever's been built can stay, that's grandfathered in, but everything after has to meet our requirements. And, uh, as meeting our requirements, we identified that was one of the requirements for his property, and it was unique in that it was a double-fronting property where he had right-of-way on both sides, so he ended up with like a ten-foot buffer on the whole perimeter of his lot. Um, I think, for future development, if we wanna avoid this issue, uh, we, you could direct staff to do a text amendment to reduce that buffer width, to, so that makes more sense, and we're not wasting, uh, so much land with just this buffer strip. So, uh, my proposal going forward, if we wanna resolve this issue, I would just ask for your direction to go ahead and start working on this application.
So, just so I'm clear, then the parking lot would come up five feet is what the, in the front, right?
In, in the shit, right, if it's existing.
Also on the side of the dentists too, you would, that would see that chunk a little bit.
We're giving a whole ten feet plus there we have theirs.
Right, okay, so yeah, so you're talking to me, twenty feet.
So we have five, and they have three, so there's like eighty probably.
So yeah, you still have, you still have a buffer of some type between them.
Yes, yeah. So I think something in a situation like this, you know, you can look, you know, between two divisions, it's like a case-by-case, you can look what's existing. You know, if we're on the other side, it's all the way up, you know, that's all for me.
Sure, no, no, I understand, okay.
Uh, and what you have to realize is that would have to go through a public hearing process, his, uh, permit is already approved, he can go ahead and build as is. If, uh, you did give us direction to bring that text amendment forward, we would have to wait for that to go through the public hearing process, and then resubmit a new, uh, building permit application with that proposal, so that when building inspections goes out, uh, our department goes out to inspect the property, they see that it's the same as, uh, his second.
So there's a process involved here, what you're saying? Okay.
So you're saying that we wouldn't be able to get a permit until?
You, I, I believe your permit is already approved, unless there's other departments that haven't signed off on it.
I think we're waiting for fire.
This, whatever.
Yeah, the board, signed up, okay.
But I wanna make sure. But if they're changing the plan.
Yeah, any alterations?
The building, the building could be worked on, the parking lot would have to be up in there, so.
We could do phased, yeah.
So you could do the bill, in theory, in theory of this, you'd be able to do the building, but then the parking lot would have to be resolved one way or another.
Yeah.
So, 'cause, yeah, the building permits were the actual structure.
This really broke the law.
Yeah.
But the building's probably more critical at this juncture than the parking lot, so that's what I'm saying, we could do this as a phased approach at this juncture, because nothing's gonna change with the building, this has got to do with parking lot.
Typically, you're not gonna be able to build, you're not gonna build the parking lot first, you're gonna be building, building, so.
What do you have, I mean, as far as like the text, how long does that take?
So please start with that.
Typically, uh, I don't know, I think we've been looking at about six to eight weeks, just because of the public hearing requirements to, uh, advertise, notify the public of the application, so that's controlled by the state statute.
Yeah, it's felt this been viewed by so many that, you know, six to eight weeks, that's, doesn't put us until October.
What about for the site work, though? I mean, do you, what date were you thinking that you would need to start the parking lot?
Well, one thing, since we actually switched now, we tilted up, kind of just stick built, you know, so like, put that parking lot in almost any time. And it gets on the drive, you know, while the building's here to build, you know? The more, you know, hurdles we have, the longer, the ratio time right now with the heating charge, the lower the heating charge are ready, you know, and we shouldn't have to acquire that all where we are. So, we just got to, you know, like I said, from my experience, we're ready to go since it's straight. So, the longer it sits, it sits, it sits, and if we do get a fall, like we did last fall, the parking lot, I mean, I've got to get in if we can't figure out that the text amendment is still sit pending, you know? So, I just feel like this is, it could probably be done here, I guess, I mean, it's, it's just common sense, you know, that's what I look at.
Could we have reported for the parking lot?
Well, this would do.
And then, if it gets approved, then we can, oh, would that be?
Add to it.
Add to it, and then do that little?
I mean, if we're gonna change our ordinances to match the situation, can we make a exception to this? Because by the time it's done, we fit our.
Yeah, that's kinda what I was thinking too.
This is the impetus to change our, our text amendment, our ordinance to be more process, unique process.
This is unique enough, because it's probably, I don't know, we're gonna run into a situation like this again, based upon where we're currently sitting anyway.
And all, and just to reconfirm, all we're asking for is a change to the setback for the parking lot to the west, the buffers of the seventeen, and a change to the buffer to the dentist side, right, that's the only.
Well, I think change that to five feet.
Right, that's the change, right?
From ten to five, yeah, yeah.
And the existing, you know?
And you know, maybe.
And the city engineer didn't do it the same way.
Yeah, sure.
Maybe the direction you can give to staff is, for right now, we'll enforce it as five, and then, uh, we'll work on a text amendment to make sure that that gets altered.
That's what I would see.
That's what I think we should do.
I would like the motion that we direct staff to enforce the current upper, as stated by, here it is five, and position for two, um, to text amendment to adjust the, um, ordinance to the new, to this new state.
I am abstaining.
Yep. Anybody else? Dave made a motion.
I'm dying in my mind.
It's also, I'll second. Any questions, or?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Going once, going twice? Okay.
I'm saying, I mean, well, who said, who said seconded?
Sorry, I thought you were talking to him, I didn't catch it, I apologize, you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, you abstain, I apologize.
I'm like, I'm like the guy who's just talking.
Never mind.
I apologize for being so quiet in our.
Yeah, stop that. Alright.
Okay.
Moving on, alright, Lucas, you're up.
Thank you, guys. Good evening.
Thank you, guys. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I'd like to just do, so here, do Mr. Mayor, uh, nine, uh, A through E altogether, and one motion, I can scroll through all of them.
A through E?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. So the, all these are just resolutions directing the special assessment commission to levy assessments for last year's projects. So, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen dash one, uh, levy that in the amount of four million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, improvement district twenty nineteen dash two, levy assessments in the amount of three million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Eight hundred and sixteen, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Improvement district twenty nineteen dash three, in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and fourteen cents. Twenty nineteen dash five, in the amount of two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. And improvement district twenty nineteen dash six, in the amount of seven million, eight-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty cents. So, twenty nineteen dash one is-
Thank you.
Late view, twenty nineteen dash two is roundabout and seventy-nine. Twenty nineteen dash three is sixty-third. Twenty nineteen dash five is Vistos and twenty nineteen dash six is Copper.
So at this stage, it's just asking them to start the process of, start the process of reviewing that, the amount and then of the assessment for the district that was defined with that project, correct?
Yep.
So it isn't actually the amounts of, you know, for individual properties, it's just for, to start the process.
So the total cost of the bond that we're looking at here, I mean, just with this mu-
I think it's around twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
That's for all of these projects.
Yep. We'll bundle them all together so we can get a good rate again, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's why Colliers is pushing to get this stuff done now.
Right.
Watch that get done before the election.
Well, the rates are fantastic right now. Let's get real. I know. We all know.
So like I said, uh, we just do all those.
So, yeah, just to reiterate what Brian's stating, it's just starting the process, this does not state who or what or where or when. We present the information to the assessment commission, they review it, they provide feedback on how it will be assessed, that type of thing. And I think the critical one is for the roundabout, we again have a million dollars from the county. We, as the city, last, with the last meeting or two meeting, go to, on one point two five.
Last meeting.
Last meeting, two point five million. And we have talked and discussed with the school district, one point two five, not two point five, one point two five in the city. And we talked with the school district, they're pushing that for a, well, assessments that-
We're, we're pushing for a hundred and fifty percent assessment on them. Now, we've, I got an email here just a little while ago, they're not as thrilled about a hundred and fifty percent. But, uh, the logic behind it is that they're the primary driver of pretty much all those projects that Lucas listed. Uh, just so you know also is when, the next steps is there'll be a public, there would be a public hearing that, for the special assessment commission, so the public could go and protest their proposed assessment or give their input. And then, that would go, they would make a recommendation and that would go to you guys then.
That includes the, their, the hundred and fifty percent.
And they could, yeah, they can make their case to the special assessment commission and to the city council. And the city council decides what they would like to do. So, uh, but yes, this is, really just getting the process started for, from the council side. So you're not approving any individual amount for any single property or any properties at this time.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to direct the assessment commission to begin the process of competing levies for projects twenty nineteen dash one through twenty nineteen dash six.
Second.
Okay. John does the second. I'm gonna roll call this one, guys. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, so we'll go to nine, F, then, uh, Lucas.
So, a, a quick question with those, uh, council previously directed staff to send out letters for, uh, all these projects to notify, uh, individuals of their assessment.
Do we need a bond for that too? It's gonna be expensive.
Twenty nineteen dash two has over eighteen hundred parcels. So just postage for that is gonna cost eight hundred dollars. Do you want us to do that? Send to our office and send it out?
Our consistency, yes, we're gonna have to do that.
Yep.
Yep. I know. We'll keep the post office happy, right?
The letters will go out, what, that, those letters go out once the commission has determined that there will be an assessment provided.
Yeah, once they create the assessment, that's when it gets sent out, and they're saying that you can come to the objection hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, we gotta let folks know.
So, that's for all, that's for all the letters or just the one?
Just the one.
Just the one, it's a city one. So this, this is gonna be well over a thousand dollars, but that's part of the cost of that bond, just to cover these costs.
And you, that's built in.
Yeah.
Right. Yep. Okay. So, it's absolutely right thing to do.
Yep. So then, uh, Mr. Mayor, nine F was just a resolution directing Colliers, uh, and Onsted to sell the bonds. So, you'll all recall, last year was just ten bonds, so now we need to do a dependent bonds. So it's basically just a, a resolution hiring, uh, Colliers as your bonding agency and Onsted to sell your bond also.
Yep. So.
Second.
Okay. Chelsea and John. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Tell me one, a good rate like we got last time there, Lucas.
We'll do. We have all the control for that.
I know you're doing, we're throwing out there. All right, who wants the next one, Ken, Barrett or Lucas?
Yep, uh, the last service sixth edition reason, uh, if you recall, this was Jack Boyer's application for, uh, last service sixth edition where he took, uh, three lots and, uh, lots and created two. Uh, with that application, he had a request for a zone, uh, from R six to R two. The first reading was approved at your last city council meeting. This would be the second reading and staff hasn't received any comments. Uh, nothing has changed and therefore staff recommends approval.
So, move.
Second.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Dave, Brian. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think that's the one I abstained from last time, but I'm not sure.
You wanna say you abstained?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Barrett, you got the next one.
Okay. Uh, for the next item, this is a request for a certificate of name change. Uh, what had occurred is Maple Lake Estates addition was recorded. Uh, when staff submitted an interesting, uh, plan request to the county, it got rejected because it violated one of the United States Postal Service's policies that streaming proposals can't have, uh, stu- two, God, I can't talk tonight. Two street typologies. Uh, there's two roads, one was East Loop Road and the other one was West Loop Road. So loop is a typology, road is a typology, having two together violates that policy. So, we asked the applicant to provide two street names and to rename the streets, which is effectively what we're doing. So we would be renaming East Loop Road Brigandy Drive and West Loop Road to Concrete Drive. And, uh, included in the packet I attached to the letter from the county explaining how that violates, uh, USPS policy. And, uh, unless, uh, if you have any questions, staff recommends approval.
So I think there should be a resolution for this. I mean, separate resolution, so it's gonna be a plus. You're actually approving a resolution to change, you can.
Apologize, that was not included. Yes, it is included, yep.
So it's called a resolution to change, is that what we're dealing with here?
And it's, it's attached to here. So if I can approve it.
So.
Second.
Dave, Chelsea? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Brenton, you've got twelve.
Okay. I think they should be up there, Brian. Making sure.
Um, so you want me to pull up all three of them?
Yeah, there's the three different ones here. If you start with the commercial one, that's probably the best one to start with. Uh, I do, we do have Keith here, if you have any more de- any detailed questions about what these are or what's going on. Um, really what we're doing some cleanup work, costkeeping on some of our permit fees for, or fees tied to building permits. Um, the first one you see, I believe this is the mechanical, yeah, this is the commercial one. Uh, if you scroll down a little bit, Brian, what you see in blue are the suggested changes. Uh, Keith has been going through this, him and Caleb have, to really see what is necessary, what's not. Uh, a couple of changes like plan review fee and resubmittals, the minimums, we haven't had the minimums really occur too often, so we feel it'd be necessary just to, it would be appropriate just to remove them. The sign permit, uh, currently, the city of Horace has a fee of five dollars per square foot for signage. Uh, when you look at West Fargo, Fargo, they're in the ballpark of twenty-five to thirty cents per square foot. So, that's one area we're extremely off compared to our neighbors on, is the cost of a sign permit. So, our recommendation on that is thirty-five cents per square foot. It puts us a little bit over what they are, but not the five dollars, so not having a four dollar and sixty-five cent difference. Um, it also has in there, the big area, this is what impacts us the most, is if a contractor or builder does work without a permit, we've had this happen on occasion, that there's actual costs tied to it. So their permit would be double or it, it's broken out based on their permit value. Like I said, we have had occasions where builders have started, they say, heck with it, we're gonna build and they start without getting the approvals and sometimes we're in the situations where they have to make changes. Uh, we had one last year where it was approved, but we had to do changes to the project anyways, so. Uh, we like to prevent those situations and, like I said, have, uh, additional cost if they do that work without it. They said this for commercial, if you go, do you have any, if you had any questions on the commercial side? Are there any questions on commercial? No, if you go to the residential one real quick? Keith, if I'm missing anything, let me know. Yeah. Uh, and you scroll down, there, Keith did a good job highlighting these in blue. Uh, the one different, big difference in this one is for residential properties, just like I was talking about, they start work without a permit. Those are down in the bottom, and then the other area, if you scroll up to the top, or, about halfway up, Brian, yeah, right there. Uh, install siding replacement only, so this is somebody that's residing in their house. Uh, that's typically a, not much of a permit to review or plan review or anything. So having its own area, just like we have a deck permit, windows, fence permit. Uh, basically siding one fifty dollars per thousand evaluation, so.
Why replacement, what, what's the?
It's just like if you're-
We do an inspection of their siding?
We basically check to see if they did replace the siding. It's nothing real elaborate, uh, but this would be, right now, if you're doing that, you have to get a building permit. So it does make this a little bit cheaper for a homeowner if they're-
I mean, they, we haven't had that before, that's the thing, right?
We have, I believe.
Very few.
Very few, but we have had them.
Just surprised we're picking out that one.
Yep.
Replacing siding.
Yep. So, it's just, like I said, the-
When you're doing a significant modification to your, attached to your building, I would think that's, that's kind of the governance, right? Is that you're doing something that's attached to your building. So like, if I put in a freestanding deck, I don't have to put a, uh, get a permit, but if I put in a deck that's attached to my house, that's when I-
Yeah, there's been a couple residing permits this year, which is why we're kidding.
And when it's a building permit, then you're talking it's potentially more expensive versus this would be a cheap.
And this would be really big if we have like a real bad hailstorm or something, that's gonna be what? The, when you have a lot of siding is when you have a bad storm come through.
It seems kind of funny that there needs to be a siding permit, but not a patio permit. There's no, it's like-
There would be for a deck.
There would be, yeah.
But if you're gonna do like favors, then there would-
Like if you're gonna pour a patio, concrete patio, you don't have to get a permit?
Right, the way it's set up.
Yeah.
I mean, we can create a zoning permit, but as far as building code, there's not really a safety element to it because it's all underground.
Yeah.
I mean, unless there's multiple elevations.
Like block coverage.
Yeah, technically, if you have, um, any, if you have like a retaining wall over four feet that requires a permit because there's an element of safety, so you can fall off. And, and then, uh, shifting up the ground too.
But like block coverage for pe- for concrete, there's gotta be a percentage.
There is, um, like, there's no permit tied to it, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, they're supposed to comply.
Yeah.
It's normally not too much of an issue, we haven't gone across it too much, so.
But with the siding replacement, what is the, what is the review on that?
Very little.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's why I'm curious, I don't understand why we're picking that one out versus, like a roof replacement. I, I would think that would have more potential future impact on-
North Dakota does not, we've, we've gone along with North Dakota and they don't, they've amended roofing permits. So we don't, that doesn't require, but siding does.
So where did this one come from? Is this from a, a state permission?
Nope, no one else does that, I've just, it was something I proposed because, uh, for the general homeowner that's replacing their siding, some of those get, uh, hefty.
Cause it's, it's bound, it's treated as a building permit otherwise. So what he's proposing is that it would be separated out, so it's not as a building permit. Cause if it's done as a building permit, that side, that's siding, the cost for doing the siding, the permit for it is gonna be up there more significant, it'd probably be double or triple that, if it has that.
Yeah, it's just so it's not based on value, like, we've already done, they've already done it with, um, let's see, vigorous windows and decks. I mean, those are a flat, flat fee. Um, and some, I mean, I don't know what it costs to reside a, you know, if it was a thirty thousand dollar reside. I mean, some of those building permit fees get kind of hefty, so it'd be good to reduce it.
So this kind of helps you also track?
I mean, from the city standpoint, it'd be nice to get, get extra fees, I mean, but at the same time, there's no, there's not, not really a review and there's not really an inspection for-
So I think that's the difference, as he stated, if I go replace my siding today, I gotta go build a permit with him. Which goes through a longer process, which has a higher value, which costs more.
It's still, this is still a building permit, it's just-
It's just a simplified process.
Yep. It would have to go, it would be subject to a plan review fee and a building permit cost. Where with this, it's just a more simplified amount that is a lot cheaper for a homeowner. So, that, that's what we're trying to do, is just simplify the, the process on it, so.
That makes sense.
And then if you go to the next one, if there's not any other questions on this one, the next one is tied to mechanical. So, currently, we don't do a whole lot with inspections tied to mechanical. However, there's been, you know, we're trying to, trying to get that into that bargain that's a specialized area. Uh, with our relationship with Miss Midwest Inspection Services, they are capable of doing that. And we're working on also, you know, gain our staff more up to speed on those different areas too. But we don't have a fee structure tied to any mechanical inspections. So, what we're proposing here is to get a fee structure in place for where those, there's mechanical inspections necessary. Uh, that way, we can inspect, have somebody actually inspect these items. And these are important areas, we're talking like when somebody's doing, you know, gas appliances or running gas in their house or their HVAC, um, heating, cooling, any, any of that stuff, that's, that's what we're looking at. So, this is basically mirroring a very similar structure to what our partner is, Midwest Inspection Services. It's what they use, a lot of it is very similar to the rates that they charge for us on that. So, we're proposing to have fees tied to inspections for mechanical also.
So this is all brand new?
This area here, mechanical permits is brand new completely. So, I guess we could've did it all in blue, but.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah.
Is that commercial or residential?
This would be applicable to, I believe, both.
Yeah, they've broken it out in terms of the rural one and the residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's set up for the whole.
Yeah.
So this would be something that would be instituted when a new construction is occurring? Or if I'm replacing them, let's say, my central area, even if I have a, if you have a quick inspection, make sure that it's done.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
Okay.
Which, they haven't been doing.
What's that?
Yeah.
Uh, they weren't doing before I got, when I got here. But it's something that should be done, cause I mean, of all the things that could kill you in a house.
Right.
It's probably plumbing, electrical and gas, so the IXL is really pushing for us to start doing these. And, um, I don't know that we're yet, but at least, I mean, there's a fee structure.
We're, we're trying to get the framework.
Since we're, since we're pressing fees.
Yeah.
So where, where, bring it up, then.
But if they're replacing like a furnace, so you're saying on replacing a furnace on a house, that- But if they're replacing like a furnace, so you're saying on replacing a furnace on a house, that would have to be permitted?
Yes, and it, you know, according to this, it's heating, residential heating and appliance would be a forty dollar permit. And then it would, it'd be someone that would go out there, run a bus, would go out there and make sure that the venting was right. I mean, what's, I've seen.
Yeah, it's good.
It's got a hot wall, and it started the house on fire.
Yeah, I think it's just people don't realize that they need a permit for it, so.
Right.
Making sure people understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, while that, it's basically gonna be all the providers, right? Cause it's typically gonna be done by a, you know, provider, like, you know, All American or somebody. So they're gonna have to know that, oh, I can't do that work until I get a permit. So it's gonna be basically.
And this is.
The contractor that's gonna be applying for the permit on our behalf, or on the president's behalf.
And this is.
Companies in town.
Yep, once we, I mean, I mean, we get the fees, and then, but once we go forward with, I was kind of thinking the first of the years when we started for residential, I don't know if we changed, changed it for commercial or not.
Yeah.
That was kind of my. But yeah, I've, we get a list from other jurisdictions, I think I already have, have most of the names, and try to get, and send it out to most, all the contractors.
What, what's being proposed, probably though, this is not anything new to the area.
No.
This is, so when you're talking about contractors going, oh, that does, it's more education that, yes, they have to get a permit in horse now. But having to deal with permits for these activities before isn't anything new when they're doing work in other communities. It's just new here, because we've never had the structure to do it. So we're probably in catch-up still, but we're trying to clean this up, so.
Russ, you had a question?
Yeah, if I had the communities, are you doing this in Fargo or West Fargo?
Yes.
Yes.
Consistency.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, concerns?
Nope.
I'm making a motion from the resolution fees.
Okay. Chelsea makes a motion, done, does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Keith. Jim, you got the next one.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, what I have before you is a balancing change order for the shared use tax. Increases the time track by fourteen thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars sixty-two cents. The makeup of this was additional seating in the bottom of the ditch. If you recall, there was a lot of ATV and other track, tracks on the bottom of the ditch. Made sense to seat that and get it all established as part of this project, since they were there, so. It's additional, after we balance it all out, as you can see on the second page there, there are a couple items that we just overran, typical deviation. We underran a couple too. The big ones were the, were the top, were the hydraulic mulch and seating class one, so. And then we had to take a little bit of area to, to tie in, tie our slopes in, so it increased our area of seating.
Can I ask, say that again, what's the reason for the change order?
Seating and hydraulic mulch, we overran the quantity that we originally imposed.
For the reason?
There were a couple spots where we had to flatten out the side slopes a little more than we had expected, and then required more seating further out, just more. And then the bottom of the ditch was disturbed due to corridors and redneck border, so they touched that up when they were outseating it, and that.
Wouldn't that have been part of the job to begin with?
No, we didn't go out that far, cause we just went to the tie points.
Okay.
And then we got out into the, into the bottom more where, where it was disturbed.
So is that just gonna get beat up again?
It's gonna get beat up again.
You'd like to say no.
I would really like to say no, but I.
I've seen them.
I've seen them on the path also. And, you know, we talked at one time about. Have we gotten signs? We have not got signs yet on there, that's gonna be part of the removal of the, of the other path.
That's right.
Signs and stuff put on there at that time, so. I guess my question to you, Brent, and are we going, do you want to run the removal of that, any cost through this project, or you want to do it separate? Because I was under the assumption we were gonna do that separate.
We could do it separate.
Okay.
Either one is fine, so if we close it out.
That's what, that's what I thought, is we get this project closed out, it is through the North Dakota Department, we just need to get it.
We need to get that done, yeah. Okay, any other conversation? Wasn't looking for a motion to accept a change order.
I'm motioning to accept a change order.
Dave, that made a motion, you had a second?
Second.
Chelsea does the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Almost all approved, all right. Kate, Brent, you got the other one here on the temp.
Okay. So the next one here is for the eighty-first Avenue temporary construction easement. The eighty-first Avenue project was awarded to Dakota, I believe, Dakota Underground. The anticipation of the Lakeview addition plat, first plat, first addition plat, was expected to have happened by then, and it hasn't been. In order to be able to have the project move forward, we need to get a temporary construction easement. In order to do that, our temporary, what we've paid for temporary construction easements, the cost tied to it has been seventy-seven cents per square foot. Cost tied to the project would be billed towards the special assessment district project. So what we're looking for is approval, we use seventy-seven cents per square foot, and purchase the necessary square footage needed to construct the road. Since the plat is not likely to be finalized or even happen here within the next few months, so we need to be able to move forward with this project. Otherwise, what we'd be coming back to the council is to stop the project. Or we haven't given a notice to proceed, but then we basically just throw up bids, and we'd have to rebid it later on, like next summer, but.
This project was requested by the school, this runs on the south side of their high school facility, high school athletic complex. Where the West Fargo schools platted their, their acreage, they platted half of the right-of-way for eighty-first school, with the intent of the Lakeview addition plating the other half of it. There have been numerous discussions within the city and on the staff level about the appropriate way going forward with that, and as we're finding out that things will might have to change, just because camp is lying right. This is an important part to the school complex and getting it done. This is a way of, of allowing access to that half of right-of-way that the city doesn't have right now, for the purposes of constructing that road, so.
Okay.
Okay, so, just so I can be clear, the other side of the road you're stating is not platted yet, correct?
The, the side of Lakeview addition of is not correct, side to the north. So all we've seen on that is preliminary plats, and that's what everything went off of, was the preliminary plating for the Lakeview addition.
But this, so you're stating the road should not change, correct? But something about the rest of the plat, Russ may potentially change that one, hearing you. Cause I'm saying we're, we're getting approval to put a, we're getting an E, or it means we go construct a road on a portion of stuff that's not platted.
Correct.
Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
So we go put this road in, and then something happens, you can't take out the road.
Your ordinance requires that if they're going to develop that in the future, they have to dedicate that other half.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, we're okay with that, right?
So.
Just because it's not platted, definitely.
And through your, through the ordinance and the easement, the way it's structured, it says that the city maintains that easement until such time as the plat is recorded? Or the city executes permit easements, or acquires that property.
Yeah.
So if something didn't happen, like you didn't happen, do you have to go acquire that land?
Yes.
Do the permit, you provide a fee title or acquire permit easement for it, but yes. Yeah, okay.
Given the location of this, plating of that property is highly likely.
Correct.
It's just that they've, the developer had some concerns, and they wanna hold off, they wanted to hold off, hit pause on the development at this time. So we're looking at, we still need to move forward with this project in order to be able to get the road constructed in time for the schools, like high school, for example, actually happening. So we need to get that moving, so.
So are the costs included in the, in the, in the purchase? I mean, where do these costs come from? The fee that we would pay.
We have, we typically account for land acquisition within our estimates for that, but also in contingency of the project.
We have a construction contingency at this point right now, for ten, for temporary bonding purposes. And then when the final bonds come around, just like we did earlier for those five projects, we can take care of it that way.
So the cost is rolled in, or it's factored into the purchase of the land price?
How much total is this one to be done?
So right now, our, or Jim and their engineer are going back and forth to finalize the exact square footage. The cost is going to be ranging around sixty to sixty-seven thousand dollars, depending on where that's total square footage is. The developers, engineers asking for five additional feet, and Jim is reviewing that to make sure.
Side of right-of-way, there's a construct, there's utility easement, and we had a ten-feet there, preferably five-feet. It's just some of the work going back and forth on the right-of-way itself, for where the road would be constructed is, they're not questioning that, it's just a technical easement.
So we'd be looking at the seventy-seven cents per square foot, that is what we've used throughout this whole year for temporary construction easements. Treating everybody the same on that, and that easement would be, the final square footage would be determined at, with our engineer and theirs, to figure out what the most appropriate amount.
So basically, you're looking for a rep.
Approval to be able to.
Proceed with the.
Yes.
Purchases or temporary easement.
Yep.
Funding, so.
So then we can move forward with the project.
Second.
Okay, Brian, a question?
Second, Kate, go.
When the final plat is done on Lakeview, they're gonna have a ten-foot easement, correct?
For a utility?
Yes.
They will have ten, yeah. Typically, where the sticking point is, Russ, is that.
Okay, go ahead.
Typically, when we do these, the service lines get extended on another, beyond that, into that ten-feet, beyond that ten-feet. Get them behind any type of utilities.
Yep.
And that's where we're debating as to if they need an additional five or not.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that they're not planning on a final five feet, okay?
Okay, so Brian made a motion, David is second. Any other discussion, guys, or was it a matter of vote? Okay, all in favor, actually, I'm gonna do a roll call, this is money. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. And it carries, all right, so fifteen, we're not gonna do, so move on to sixteen, gonna pick that one up.
So I can start, we're just doing all the resolutions to actually create this project. Remember, in your last meeting, we discussed the drainage, so Jim, if you want, get into the project now.
Now, this is the, this is the old, old River Oxville. We discussed the options at the last meeting, we looked at the cost alternatives from the last meeting, decided to proceed with that project. It's also discussed that it was gonna be a hundred percent city fund, fifty percent city fund, fifty percent special assessment. From that meeting, it was decided to be a kind of a shared project between the two. So in doing so, we need to start the special assessment process and create these resolutions and deploy it from there, so. Look, this is offices for their repairs, so. The district that we had defined is the drainage area, we looked at that last time, didn't reinvent the wheel on that.
Nothing else has changed in that original estimate?
So, so the first thing that's gonna change, Rivers Edge Two was supposed to be improved in District twenty-twenty dash five, but Jim informed me that that project probably is not going through this year. So we'll call this project Storm Sewer Improvement District number twenty-twenty dash five.
Five, okay.
So for, for that first one, Mr. Mayor, the resolution creating the district, the district names will be Storm Sewer Improvement District number twenty-twenty dash five. And as Jim indicated, the boundary area will be that drainage area, so that will be included as a, as a boundary map on that resolution creating the district.
Okay.
So that's your first action item.
Okay, guys, have any questions on this one? Al, just to let you know, I did get your letter, we got it, and I read through it, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. I think what the council, or my, my impression is that I want to do, I know what you, what you're saying in the letter, but I don't want to Band-Aid this one anymore. I want to come up with a permanent solution on this thing, so we don't have to, I want your yard to be done with the, with having the flooding on it, I want to try and get this thing done. So I understand where you're coming from with it, and I appreciate you sending us the letter, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
So.
By the way, how are you gonna keep skateboarders and, what were we about to say?
You don't want to make this difficult? No, I know, you're.
We could put signs in it right away, and we get going.
Right, I mean.
It's still my backyard, that's my best.
Understood, yeah. Let's hope we can do some teaching and putting up some signs, I don't know what, you know, I don't want to put up spikes or anything like that on that, on the cement, but you know.
A lot of the time with snowmobile, they do all this winter cutting, or the winter not cutting.
I know.
They're trying to grow trees, and they cut, they have trees on, which we don't have any respect for anybody else.
Yeah, and that's been a problem forever, since I've been back there, so I know.
Thank you for, thank you all.
Okay, so guys, got any discussion on A? Otherwise, we're gonna look for motion.
Move that we need to create the resolution for creating the district.
Okay, Dave made a motion, Brian is second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, A is approved.
The next one, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution directing the engineer to prepare a report on feasibility of this project.
We had that last time, we went through that in the last meeting.
Okay. You still want us to approve something, though, I mean, or you wanna?
Yep.
So.
Yeah, so, so this resolution is approving that report.
John makes a motion.
Or directing for that report.
Yep. Then Brian, you did a second? All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Carries.
The resolution, accepting, set report. Time to move on fast.
Yeah.
So move.
Second.
John makes a motion, Brian is second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and on to D.
Finally, just the resolution directing the engineer to prepare plans and specs.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, let's get that put together.
No, I'm, you know.
Even we got off the list, so.
Yeah, and seventeen is off our list for the evening, so we will proceed on to eighteen, food truck.
Okay.
We have a couple more coming.
We have a few more, we have two more food truck, or vendor, food trucks slash vendors. One is to the part, my understanding, Big J's is for participation with the food truck events that we're having every Wednesday at Horse with the Church. And Holy Smokes, my understanding is that's more for Bean Days, what they're looking at having like a tent or something for that. That's, yeah, that's.
Local.
Dan, Dan Beecher, I believe, I believe it was, that.
Yep.
And he did that catering for a while, like a couple meals a week when COVID first started. And I know there was a lot of positive feedback or from residents on that there, and they appreciate that. But anyways, both of these are for their food truck permits for the rest of the year. Tied to food trucks, just more FY for you, we anticipate having four trucks out there on Wednesday. We're trying to beat the drum to let people know, so far, knock on wood, weather looks like it'll be decent. And also, my understanding is that's the first day teachers are back into the schools to get ready for the school year. So we're gonna be letting the schools know too, that the food trucks are going to be present, because we think that might be a, a good thing for them to be able to have a different choice for, you know, they don't have students yet. They'll be able to go out for a lunch break or something, is the thought behind it, so. Anyways, we're trying to get the word out for there, that, but there will be a lot more selection this time. And I believe one of these is, the Big J's is one to participate for this Wednesday, if it isn't, this one is next one, so.
Motion approved applications.
Okay.
Second.
Brian and Chelsea, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, do these have to come to us every time?
Right now, they do.
By ordinance, they do.
Yep. We're gonna be talking about that, but this is kind of, we'll call this an inaugural one, and I think we'll have to have some discussion about that over the winter, whether we want to continue.
I think there's.
I don't, I don't think we need to.
Yep.
I mean, there is, there's another mechanism, but it's just, this is all new to us, so it's probably okay that we're all involved right now, but I think it can change.
Right, why don't we put it on consent agenda?
If you would like them in the future to be consent, you can.
You know, honestly, I think you direct staff to have the qualifications, you know, ask for it, the application and the information.
Yep.
You know, it's just gonna be a simple deal for us, so why not put it on consent agenda?
Okay, the only thing.
Their job to.
Right, the only thing their job would be is if you wanted to get presented with what the fare was going to be. Okay, the only thing, right, the only thing they're down to be is if you wanted to get presented with what the fair was going to be. Otherwise, we did consent agenda, there isn't much conversation, we should just go with it. So, but that's up to you guys, I mean, I don't, I don't care either way.
I'm more than happy either way, if you'd like to put it on the agenda.
We'll, we'll talk about it, I'll, but I mean, unless you guys wanna know what is coming to town, that's, I'll kinda doing it, but otherwise, we could just consent it.
If we put it on the consent agenda in the future, if we have any others, uh, if you wanna have any discussion about it when we do consent agenda action, you can pull it, you can request anything to be pulled from the consent agenda.
Right.
And then be discussed later in the regular agenda. And that's typically consent agenda, you typically wouldn't have any discussion on any of the items there. If you do wanna have discussion, the most appropriate way for it to be, it should be pulled to the regular agenda. So, yep.
Okay.
Move it to consent agenda for right on.
Yep.
If we have questions, we can ask.
Okay.
Agreed.
Alright, Brian, why don't we just do that then, forward this, put it on the consent agenda? And we'll do that from now going forward. Alright, on to number nineteen then.
Okay, this one, I'll try to be very quick, we've worked with this individual last year a handful of times for Rookery Rock Winery. Uh, they've been, they've enjoyed coming to Horse, they've been very successful in selling wine here during special use events at farmers markets. Uh, they would like to participate in Bean Days and three different Horse Farmer Markets that we have planned coming up here. Uh, so September twelfth, August twenty-eighth, September eighteenth, and October second. Uh, each one would be a fifty dollar permit, uh, but we have to have council approval to issue a special liquor license event, you know, for the day for them. So we're looking for council approval to have it on those four different dates. Uh, like I said, we've worked as a vendor before and have not had any issues with them.
So moved.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And then it says, I will apply for the anti-tax department for special use permit?
Yep, they have only so many permits that they get from the state for special events. So they don't want to, this is pretty common with a vendor like this, they don't wanna use up their permit number or number of permits until they've gotten approval from the city to be able to move forward. So, like I said, the state, I believe this vendor is giving like, they give them like, let's say twenty permits per the year, so they can only participate with twenty special events. And they don't wanna use up, yeah, or days, yeah. Yep, so that, that's why, is he, he don't wanna use up his days, 'cause once he submits for a day saying, I'm going to do on this date, it's gone, even if he back, even if he has conflict or can't make it work or the event gets canceled, he can't get that day back from the state.
So we approve this, then he gets his permit from the state?
Yep.
And then comes back and goes to the event?
You approve it, you approve it, if you approve it tonight, it doesn't come back to you guys, it's just if.
No, no, he, he comes to the event and he has a certificate, he's legal.
Yep.
What if he doesn't have a certificate?
Then he won't be at the event.
Okay.
Because he has to be legal with the state.
That bigger she's at the state, it's the horse.
Yep. Uh, this individual, I, in my experience working with him before, he's very, very knowledgeable about all the requirements, he actually helped with them in writing most requirements, so. Uh, it was actually a pretty interesting experience working with him before on these liquor licenses before last year, or during last year, so. Yep.
Very good.
Dave made a motion.
Second.
John is second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Right-of-way permit requirements.
Currently for right-of-way permits, we charge two hundred dollars for a right-of-way permit, no matter what. If you're working within the right-of-way, two hundred bucks. The whole intention of that was to cover our costs or help cover our costs for individuals doing work in the right-of-way, typically drainage work. What the resident here is talking about, concerns about planting trees in the right-of-way, uh, technically, you need to have a right-of-way permit and it'd be two hundred bucks to be able to go plant trees in the right-of-way. We're trying to encourage, actually, ordinances require boulevard trees. So we're trying to encourage participer, compliance with that and people getting these in, in the new developments, covenants require that. Uh, we really don't have really much of an expense tied to that activity, it's really just when we're involving drainage. So what we're proposing is that for any right-of-way permit, if it involves drainage work or engineer review, then it's a two hundred dollar permit. If it doesn't require that, then there won't be a permit fee tied to it. Because, like I said, we're trying to get that compliance of encouraging people to get these trees in. And if they're gonna do something more involved in the right-of-way, that's typically what it is. Uh, the only other exceptions I've typically seen is when you have utilities. Utilities, they're supposed to get a permit. And with franchise agreements, they're, one of the things that they look for, and what I'll be bringing back to you in an upcoming meeting here soon, is updated ordinances for the gas and electric. And what they look for is they're more than happy to comply with doing a franchise fee. However, they look for waivers of having a fee tied to a right-of-way permit. So typically, utilities are exempt anyways, so. Like I said, that's what we're looking for, is approval to have the right-of-way fee only, only applicable when there's drainage work or engineer time necessary to review the application or the permit. We still encourage a permit to be filled out, but just not charge the fee for that.
So that way you'd be able to see exactly what's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, or, we know, yeah, Lucas.
So for that tree issue that's already covered in the city's ordinances, because you're required to get a permit before planting a boulevard, so under three dash zero three zero five, a person firm or corporation shall not plant, possibly planted, removed, destroyed, cut, defaced, pruned, or interfere with trees or shrubs within the limits of any street, alley, block, or boulevard or other public way of the city built first having obtained a written permit from the forestry advisory committee. So you established that, I mean, you did this, but hopefully that established that committee. Uh, but that's where the permit is supposed to come from for stuff like this, and then it says the permit shall be good only if the season stated on the same end of year issued, and no charge shall be made for such permit.
Yep.
So you, you kinda covered already, but the only thing you should think about is, if you're gonna have a forestry advisory committee in your ordinances, maybe we need to.
Constitute one? We, we got together, we had, we did have a group together, but that was a while back, we have not re, brought them all back in the room again for a while, so.
So my recommendation is on that permit, just say that the excavation fee is not cut, or this permit is exempt from the exemption, or the excavation.
Okay.
That's the most simple solution right now, and if you wanna change your ordinance, just say that, that in, in the excavation code, that tree planting is exempt.
And it could be for anything, we're, we're looking at, it's just, if it calls for engineer time, then there's a two hundred dollar fee. If it doesn't, there's no fee, that's why we're trying to just keep it very simple from that angle, so.
But is that in an ordinance or is that stated in a resolution?
Or.
That's what I'm saying.
Typically, fees are brought to you. So any fee, and I don't know if that two hundred dollar fee was a staff decision years ago, I think that was done.
That's what I'm saying, where did that two hundred dollar fee, where did we document that?
That was probably done before any of us were here, I don't, about when you started.
Came up from here, because we had, we had some permit fees where we weren't charging one, and then we had to have hundreds and hundreds of dollars of review to make sure drainage and everything was correct for people putting in culvers and that kind of stuff.
What really spurred this was the building companies coming and making an absolute disaster of boulevard, leaving it that way, with the city having no idea who did the work. And then once that somebody had to fix it, it was a finger pointing game. So it's a way to document who's working in the right-of-way and when they're working in the right-of-way. It's the same thing on Wall Avenue right now, there's a six-foot utilities or a five-foot utilities, and every utility is a foot and a half apart from each other versus them all coming together and being in one area. So now we gotta fight with three utilities in one area with more utilities. So I, I, I understand you don't have to charge them with the franchise fee, but really good to know who's doing the work too.
So that's, you're stating that's the point, is that somebody will still come, I, so I'm gonna plant a bunch of trees, I would still come and get a permit, there's no fee for the permit, just like that.
Cause you wanna make sure that they're planting.
Yeah. Right, variety and that kind of stuff, you're doing, you're stating the same thing, they still, everybody's still coming to get the permit.
And we're, we're trying to clean.
No fee without, if it's, unless it needs engineering work.
Trying, trying not to make it a barrier for more people not to do it. And then, like I said, with the franchise fees, uh, or those franchises like gas and electric, your teeth are in the ordinances tied to them specifically, so you can say you have to submit those permit app, or right-of-way permit applications, you have to do that. Versus right now, it's, uh, it's tougher to get them to comply because we don't have much teeth to that, so.
So what Lucas read though, you said there was no.
The tree, they say no tree, so.
So that's why I'm saying, where did, where did we have another ordinance that had a different value?
The ordinance for excavation says the registration fee for excavator's registration for a calendar year or any part thereof shall be set by resolution of the city council.
But I mean, this tree, the two hundred dollar fee that we talked about, where did that two hundred dollars, where did we state that?
I'm just saying, because it's, because it's excavation.
There's a blanket approach for.
And I'm saying.
Stating a hole for a tree is considered excavation?
And that's what I'm saying, just follow the, the tree ordinance, it says there's no fee.
You're not changing any ordinance.
You could change your ordinance if you want to make sure.
That's what I mean, it seems.
Basically, we're just trying to clean up, make sure, eliminate, eliminate the confusion tied to it, even though it gets confusing right now, it's, we're trying to make it to where there isn't that misconception of a two hundred dollar fee or anything, so.
Russ, you have something?
Does the permit require that you locate?
They are required.
I think not sort of one call.
One call requires it, 'cause if you don't do a locate and you hit a line, you're responsible for it versus if they, if you do allocate and it's not marked properly, then you hit a line, that's on the utilities for that, so.
I fully understand that, I'm just saying that the permit almost, the permit should also require a locate or not. Because there's a lot of.
But then we're restating what the state already mandates.
Yeah.
Well, yes, we are. You're just saying, put it as a no.
I would put it on a permit application.
That's what I'm saying.
It, it's just reminder, call a box reminding, so. Yep.
We're not, we're not trying to enforce anything, we're trying to save some trouble.
Yep.
Yep.
Not four one, right, eight one.
There's quite a bit of terms. There are quite a bit of terms.
Okay, but aren't boulevard trees already required with all the developments?
Yes.
But like the buildings are required to do it?
No.
Yes.
Yes and no.
It's.
Your ordinance is there.
Yeah.
But if somebody puts in a single house somewhere, not through.
Yeah, but my concern is, I don't think the boulevard trees have been enforced in new developments.
No. Cause you wanna put a tree in before a house.
Right, yeah.
That's an issue.
On the front or inside.
Yeah.
You have to see the whole.
Yeah, you, you wouldn't put a tree in.
It would be the last thing.
Yeah.
Very last thing.
I can show a very.
But I mean, there should be a plan in place that's part of the ordinances.
That's the tree committee or whatever.
Yep, that's gonna be that tree committee. Alright, let's circle back here, guys, keep it simple.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, Chelsea's. And Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, move along. Jim?
We've got a couple of the big projects, a couple of works on the engineering side of it, Southdale Farms was started last week, Southdale Farms was bringing out last week.
No, how did that happen?
Southdale Farms is underwater right now.
Southdale Farms is working on another plan to get their lift station in this week, so they aren't in the best of moods right now. I did request an update from our sixty-third and Lakeview and seventy-ninth contractors, I was told after one thirty tomorrow, I'll have it, assuming you do, there's council meeting, and I didn't wanna give you ammunition. So after tomorrow, I will forward that along for completion. Uh, all the paving is complete on that, what remains is bike chats and stuff behind the curb work, so. Uh, they did allow the school to start using Lakeview Drive to get the temporary road out and get the intersectional Lakeview Drive and Seventy-Ninth done. Traffic is going where it's supposed to be going right now, they moved up some floors on there and from the school side to get that all, get that all completed, so. Um, with the amount of rain that came on Friday, there was some, some issue with, there's a quarter of the roundabout that took on a little bit of water at a time for a little short period of time. I think that has to do with some road control downstream, but there's also very flat, the ditch going along County Road Seventeen up to the, uh, Holman position stormwater pond, or stormwater pump station is really flat. And we've had many discussions with northern improvement about that ditch and it being very flat, so. The amount of rain, in short duration, it did start backing up on there, it did go down relatively quick once that happened. The other excitement we had on Friday due to the rain was the Lost River addition, started with sanitary sewer, started backing up throughout the system. Not quite sure what happened yet, still working on that, but, uh, the contractor on the fifth addition brought in a six-inch pump, the city took up a couple four-inch pumps, so they were able to emergency discharge the lift stations. Get that brought in, she brought in the line, and then it took them like four or five hours to get that pump down, that system's really, really full, so. Uh, we're gonna look at addressing that as soon as we get around the Lost River site. I think there might have been some manholes or something that didn't have water tank covers on them, steel plate or something over the top, all of a sudden they get three inches of rain in forty minutes and it just pools up and it goes to go somewhere, so. That's kinda where I'm leaning right now, but field staff is gonna go around today and take a look at what the provisions were for, for those, uh, not complete structures and sanitary sewer yet, so. Uh, the Lakeview, or not, like Maple Lake State, they did start with the undergill last week to get washed out this week, so. That's all the fun stuff I have for you.
I want to be a school.
I haven't talked to Mark in the last week.
Are they still on track to ask for a temporary CO or what?
I was actually talking to Keith about it just a little before the meeting and it sounds like they are, they are going to try to be seeking a temporary CO tomorrow. And we'll see if they were able to accomplish items that were on their checklist.
Have you been in there in the last couple, okay?
He's been there almost daily.
I'm assuming you've been there a lot, I'm just curious, I mean, are they getting where you would think we could get to that point of doing a temp CO?
It's a lot of finishes.
Is the outside, is the outside fully done?
They have some siding on back order. Uh, they've actually gone shut down due to a little bit.
Okay, alright. But it's enclosed, right, all the minutes, weather tight and windows and that kind of stuff, so they don't have potentially other things happening. Thank you.
Okay, nothing else, Jim, you're good? Perfect. Brandon, what do you got?
Okay, Brian, if you could pull up on SharePoint, under State Council Meeting folder, there's Wire Survey folder.
On this one?
So under State Council Meetings.
Oh.
Yeah, there's a Wire Survey folder and there's a PowerPoint there. I'm just gonna run through that real quick, while you're pulling that up, I'll give a couple other updates. Um, say engineer position, update for that, we have, uh, draft profile that Bobby and I are working on with our consultant to get that cleaned up and have the position posted by, before the end of the week, hopefully middle of the week. Uh, key dates or timelines, as of right now, application deadline will be September fourteenth. Screen review candidates, September seventeenth through twenty-second. Present candidates and reports, September thirtieth. Final interviews will be October sixteenth, and we anticipate a start date mid to late November is what our goal is. It could be a little later, obviously depending on what the applicant pool is and what the, if we go and select a candidate, what their timeline is and logistics are. If they're local, obviously it might be a little quicker than if they're not. Um, but that's a timeline, what we're looking at with that. As for building permits, do you have Keith here, if you have any more, any questions tied to the building permits, but just to give you a total number, year to date, twenty twenty, we are at a hundred seventeen permits. Now permits is, we're talking a little of everything, but these are, um, like remodels, finishing a basement, deck permit, house, commercial property. Uh, so quite a few different activities, but, uh, in comparison, when you're looking at total permits this year, a hundred seventeen total permits, property valuation's a sixty-seven million ninety-two thousand two hundred nine dollars. That's basically the value that the applicant states on there, on their applications. In two thousand nineteen, at this time, we had seventy-three permits and a valuation of forty-two million four hundred fifty, four hundred fifty-three thousand, I R A, two dollars. When you're looking at total residential. When you're looking at total residential, just to give an example there, to for residential dwellings, last year we had thirty-five at this time. This year we're at fifty-eight. Uh one of the big differences is the value of the home is a little less. So they're not building as many bigger homes, but we have more homes coming through to us. So uh just some interesting facts and I'll try to give you updates on that throughout the season here. It might not be every council meeting. I'll try to give you some updates. Keith has a good report uh that he has together for that. So. Oh, commercial, twenty nineteen was zero, twenty eighteen was one, twenty seventeen is two.
Year to date.
Uh year for year to date and twenty twenty is seven. So commercial, that is not just the commercial prop- that's also um like industrial. So but that's a big difference there. Uh so thank you, Keith, for pointing that out. So yes, we have quite a few different ones, big differences there. Obviously, the numbers are a little skewed because of the when you're looking at valuation because of the schools for last year and this year, last year middle school, this year high school. And next year will be skewed a little bit also because of course elementary. But it is if you're looking at just total number of permits, that's a good indicator of what's going on too. So I just wanted to give you a heads up about that.
So real quick, Brian.
Yep.
For twenty nineteen total residential permits, do you have that figure?
Twenty nineteen total residential year to date, I don't have the calendar. I don't know if Keith would have that or if you have it.
This is this is year to date.
Oh, that's yeah, this year to date, not for. So that's sort of the whole year.
Uh, th- these are all so
So twenty nineteen.
Nineteen, those are all through August. Those aren't those aren't here.
Yeah, that's not the final year for twenty nineteen.
That's to the end of this month.
Yeah.
For those years.
So I don't have it available, but we could show that in a you know, in the future to you.
Cause you don't have probably anything coming for Cub Creek yet.
No.
There's
Three.
There's three permits issued so far.
Yeah. There are three there.
Probably a lot more coming.
Yep.
So I guess my point was end of the year between August and.
There's a lot more coming.
Yeah.
There's a lot more cause I know the uh developers, Cub Creek is available. I believe there's electrical box issue, isn't there? Aren't they trying to get electrical still out there or they got that?
The transformer?
Yeah.
Should be solved.
Okay, so Cub Creek is available. They could build in there now. Uh they are moving very quickly on uh Lost River Fifth Edition. I believe majority of underground is in, but they move fairly quickly. I would not be surprised if we see houses going in this fall for that one. Southdale, they're moving and they the developer's goal and the contractor's goal is to have that one done too. So if those go online, you know, you're gonna see a wave of houses likely being built in there.
Yeah, we have a good fall. We're gonna see you.
Yeah. Yeah, if we have a good fall that takes a while for weather to hit, we'll probably see quite a few in there. Um, any other questions on the building permits there? No? Another good news item I wanted to share with council. I mentioned that it was either last council meeting or the one before. Uh League of Cities has been working with the state on uh coronavirus relief fund allocations for cities and counties, law enforcement expenses. Uh with the corona coronavirus funding, COVID funding from the last round of helping out states and helping people out. Uh there is some funding for helping out with the cost of law enforcement. And what they're what it's looking like is that the county is going to determine the amount that cities contract with them for those months that are covered and then reimburse us our al- what our allocation would be. So we should be getting reimbursement for law enforcement cost for I believe it was seven months. Yeah, five months and one setup and two months for another one. So we're looking at six, seven months of reimbursements for due to the COVID nineteen stimulus funding to help us out. So I will be working with Sheriff John or about that. And that's uh we're looking at having him be in here next week, him and I are to catch up on a few items. So that'll be an item that I bring up and just see what his game plan is tied to that. So you know, cause I'd be more happy to give them the cost right away and say that's what we have. Cause Becky does keep track of that very well. So uh anyways, that's good news that our costs per month are around thirteen thousand, I believe. So that adds up really quickly. That's a good news item there. Uh our new mower that was approved last council meeting is already here. So we got delivered. It was delivered on Thursday last week. So it's exciting. Guys are very excited. That thing uh that thing will help. Uh it it could move a lot quicker than other mowers. So um but we have that. And then the last item I had, uh Brian has it up on the PowerPoint here. I was just gonna run really quick through the wire survey findings. Um gear or to date, and this has been up for about a month and a half. We didn't put a defined end date, but we're not really being the drum to get more survey responses. If we get a few more trickle in, great. But we have a quite quite a good response rate if you think about it. Uh hundred forty-three total responses. Um these are you my understanding, unique responses. We asked individuals to put their address down to make sure that we have unique answers if we that we are not having a duplicate yet. Also, if they did not put an address down, then they're not counted in there. If they put their street down, we at least we we considered that and especially put it in for the comments, but we needed to make sure we didn't have, you know, a house or two or yeah individual household skewing the numbers by responding to it many times. Um we offered this online. We also had a paper version. Once we kicked out the paper version, we did get quite a few responses back on paper too. Uh the paper version was included in the last utility bill. Uh we had a total hundred forty-three responses. Hundred six were horse water users while thirty-one are casserole and six were on their own water. When they're asked about horse users, now this is looking just city of horse customers that responded. So a hundred six respondents, seventy-three percent said they're dis- dissatisfied with overall quality of the water. Uh when you look at, we asked them discoloration, taste, water pressure and smell. You can see where the main concerns are. Water pressure is the least of their concerns, followed by smell, but the biggest concerns are discoloration and taste. We knew that, but this just confirms it, which helps give us more information. Uh what Bobby put together here is just to show some of the comments. Now, we took them, you know, some of these are very blunt. Folks, the taste is horrendous. They hate the rust color. It's now they say disgusting. These, like I said, these are common straight from what they said. Um, water quality is poor and then changing constantly changing water filters. Uh we found that as a trend. A lot of folks are having water filters that they have to change out. I guess a lot of this information, we've heard this, but it's nice to have the data there. When we look at the next one here for horse water users, we asked them a question of how you'd be billed. So if you had a higher base, lower cost per thousand or a lower cost per thousand, then the higher base but a higher co- lower cost per thousand but a higher co- sorry. They're asked to if they wanted to have a higher base, lower cost per thousand or a lower base and a higher cost per thousand. So it's it's how it appears. The horse water users, fifty-five percent indicated they'd have they'd prefer a lower base and then a higher cost per thousand. Example of this is like West Fargo. West Fargo has a base of your seven, seven twenty-five. I believe it's seven twenty-five or seven. And then the cost per thousand was seven twenty-five horse foot. Where Caster Rule is a base of twenty-eight, but the cost per thousand of five forty. So what's interesting is when you look at Caster Rule users, they've indicated they'd prefer the lower base and higher cost per thousand by about three fourths to a quarter. So that's interesting. Now, the concern is if you have a lower base rate and higher cost per thousand, average household, let's say, uses four to six thousand gallons, it will be more expensive very quickly to go with that approach than to go with the higher base, lower cost per thousand. If a resident has higher usage, say they're irrigating their yard, their cost in near utility bill is going to shoot up a lot quicker, obviously with that approach. So different ways to look at it, but it's just interesting to see what the prefer, what they what someone prefer. Um but that was coming from the C- Caster Rule users. When it was horse water users, it was it was almost fifty fifty. Uh overall, this is the opinions from Caster Rule water users. Ninety-three percent, they're satisfied. Ninety percent with color, eighty-four taste, wire pressure is good, smell is good. Pretty much everything over eighty percent or better. And then comments from Caster Rule users, they're glad they have Caster Rule. Um, wire is more expensive than city wire, but the quality is a lot better. It is way better. So that's a very quick run through. The survey wasn't very big. We tried to keep it short, simple, so we could get straight to the point. But I wanted to give you a quick run through of that so you know where where the public is at on it. Um, we've also had another survey out, not related to water, but tied to our strategic plan. We're starting to get handful responses on that, which is good also. And encourage anybody, if you haven't done so, please complete the survey. It helps with our strategic planning, strategic planning. We're gonna have uh workshops or meetings tied to that on September tenth and eleventh, I believe it was. It was right the Thursday and Friday, fourteen days. Yep, so that's all we had.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, portfolio reports. I don't really have anything new tonight. So John?
I have nothing.
Dave?
Uh took a reform engineer position.
Dave? Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Chelsea, what do you got?
Um, I got a proof on the bean day spire. So um I don't know if you guys are aware of the list of events, but we did shorten the event to just try to be responsible with the situation, COVID situation. So they it sounds like the Lions are still gonna do pancake breakfast. Um we'll have the five K vendors and we'll have live music starting at ten AM and that will go till two. So basically the brunch that is gonna be morning till about three o'clock where we have the car show. Um food vendors, different things, little things. And then bingo at the senior center and then fireworks at nine. Cardboard is doing a softball tournament, but they have not confirmed that. So I really don't have anything from on their end for the event. Um, there was some talk of maybe Big Earth's having some music at night, but I felt it was responsible on the city's heart not to go there. If there were to be an outbreak and it comes back to us, I just I just don't think it was the responsible thing. So I hope that's sounds good to you, Dave.
Okay. Yeah, well, let's start pushing it out there a little bit so people realize that we are doing something.
Yep, where you've got the Facebook event, I think there's like eight over eight hundred comments on or uh engagement on that. And we'll do some notifications on there that usually get a lot of interest. And we did get a handful of sponsors, interstate engineering onstead and a few other ones. So we do have some good money for the event to help cover most most all the costs.
Okay, then we got Jay Thomas should set up for Friday then?
Yep, he'll be Friday, like two o'clock usually.
Yeah, two to five. So then he's gonna be, check and see if he's gonna be at the fire hall.
Yep.
Okay, I figured we'll do it just like we did last year.
Yep, same game.
Perfect.
We didn't have anything going on Friday this year. We just we weren't even sure if the event was gonna move forward at the time. So we just wanted to keep it simple. And it's been actually really nice, you know, with the staff turnover. Hannah's got a lot and she's been doing a lot of the food trucks and the horse happenings and she's trying to put together some farmers markets. Um so it worked out well.
Chelsea, you said there's been a lot of comments made on Facebook about it?
Yeah, usually with our Facebook event, we get quite a few people either interested or they'll select that they're going to the event. Uh we did have actually quite a few cars sign up. We turned it into just a vehicle show. So boats, motorcycles, whatever. So we did have a better sign up for that this year than we've had in the past. But definitely there's lots of time to sign up. So if you know anybody, spread the word, share the Facebook post. Um vendors, five K vehicles, parade.
Yeah, well, looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think people it's really welcome. People want something to do. And I think, you know, I just hope people can be responsible. We have a lot of a long parade route that people can spread out and find some space. And then we also have the the parade candy throwers wear masks and wear gloves. Take those precautions.
Yep, sounds good. Alright, Brian, what do you got?
Uh one one thing, uh met with our uh state representatives out last week, uh met with Michael Howe and Randy Pyle. Uh they're up for reelection uh and also met with Mark Weber, our our new state senator elect. He's one of the candidates. Uh so I had a chance to meet with Brenton and I met with him and and or that group and helped them understand some of the current uh issues and challenges and so forth that we're facing, especially since some of the funding mechanisms at the state level have been uh changing, let's just say. Uh so what how what impact that's gonna have on horse. So um basically inviting them to make a regular appearance, uh come down here, you know, maybe once a quarter or something like that, present to the council and residents to let them know that, hey, you know, uh but not only they can hear from what's happening in the city, but also give us updates uh on the legislative session as it starts kicking off here uh this year. So it was a good it was a good meeting to meet our new candidate uh that would be representing us. So uh it would be and I know they've been walking around, meeting lots of residents and getting feedback from horse. So.
That's good.
We might have made him dizzy with how much we threw at him.
Yeah, I think I think they were busy when they got done. So.
Wanna make sure they understand, that's all.
Exactly, so.
Alright, anything else? Otherwise I'm gonna.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
John and Dave, uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We're done.
Just a reminder, next count.